Chris Stafford, are you on the line for homestay? Chris Stafford?
It's not on mute or anything, is it?
Is anybody on the line for the homestay? Abatements?
Ms. Wandler?
Chairman, members of the board, we're here for a whole bunch of abatements, but really it's only three, just a bunch of different years. I'm gonna let the presenters present first, so if Chris isn't on the line, we can go ahead and let Mr. Tibbles start. He will start with the Jefferson and Lincoln apartments, and then Joe will comment after that. Then we'll go to Chris Stafford if he has something, and then if Joe wants to comment, and then I'll just give my recommendation at the end if that works for you guys.
Okay, sure. Mr. Tibble, did you want to, oh, you're coming up, okay.
I just, I just sent Mr. Stafford a quick email.
Okay.
Just let him, let him know if he's having trouble at all there. All right, well, first off, thank you to Ms. Wandler and Commissioners, good, good morning, good afternoon. Appreciate, appreciate the time here today. I'm David Tibbles. I'm from the Fredrickson and Byron Law Firm in Fargo, and I'm gonna try to get everything organized there. Appreciate, appreciate your time here today. About this time last year, this body had actually approved a reduction in value for the 2018 tax year for, for the properties that I'm representing, the Jefferson and Lincoln apartment complexes. That was for the, the February 1, 2018 valuation date. Make no mistake, it wasn't everything that the taxpayers had asked for. But I think, you know, just, just kind of knowing how that, how that process played out, I really do think that it, it represented sort of a balancing of what, sort of that, that, that property-specific perspective that the taxpayers had presented and, and prepared, along with the kind of more general sort of citywide approach that, that the City Assessing Department had, had prepared as well. Like I said, it wasn't everything that the taxpayer had requested, but, but it was acceptable, and the taxpayer was satisfied and, and moved on. Chose not to, to appeal that, that decision as it, as it could have, and frankly, as it, as it has in the past. Today, frankly, I'm, I'm here asking you to engage in the same, the same exercise, and to kind of get us caught up to, to the current day. So you have, for each of Jefferson and Lincoln, you have abatements in front of you for the February 1, 2019, 2020, and 2021 valuations. Like I said, I'm, I'm really up here today, just respectfully asking that we, we engage in that same sort of exercise for, for those years as well, to get us caught up, caught up to date. I think you can do that. I think you should do that. And, and as I'll go into in, in a little bit more detail here shortly, really, at the end of the day, the discussions that we're gonna have for these, these particular tax years, it's really not much different than the discussion that was had last year for that 2018 valuation. I have really just a couple of, I think relatively, you know, briefer, briefer remarks than you've heard from me before in the past that I like to get into, just to sort of, sort of set the stage as to why, why it is that we're here. And then also what I think you can do with the information that's in front of you. But I do want to reiterate that, that again, I'm, I'm here, I'm happy to answer any sort of questions that you might have with regard to the properties, with regard to the applications, anything, anything sort of on, on that front, so please stop me if you have, if you have any questions. Also, if there's any additional information that you think would be, would be useful in, in, in making a decision, I'm certainly happy to get that for you. You know, want, frankly, at the end of the day, I think what we, what we really want is a, a data-supported decision that takes into, takes into account everything that you have available to you today. So with that in mind, just, just kind of a couple, couple brief areas of, of comment here. First off, I, I do want to just sort of level set and, and kind of remind sort of what we're, what we're dealing with, what we're trying to do, and then also give an overview of, of, you know, kind of the, the few different perspectives that, that you can use in this sort of, this sort of analysis. Recall that really the most important thing that we're trying to decide when it comes to property tax assessment is true and full value. That's, that's the term that the statute uses. That's the value of a property that, that really, through, through a couple of discounts that statute provides, really drives the, the value against which a property is assessed tax. True and full value, like I said, that's the statutory term. We know from the State Supreme Court that really that means fair market value. So what's the price that a willing buyer is gonna pay a willing seller in an arms-length transaction? And, you know, ultimately, the decision that you're making today is setting that value, setting that value in dollars. That's, that's what we're getting to. This isn't, this isn't an equalization hearing like, like happens at, at this time of year. It's, it's really an abatement. It's what's the value of, of, of this, these two properties, and actually the, the homestay is, as well. Now, fair market value, obviously, if, if a property sells today, we have a pretty good idea of what fair market value might be today. You know, unless it were, you know, foreclosure sale or a, you know, parent selling to a child. We've, we've got pretty good certainty that any sort of unrelated party transaction that gets recorded in the property records gives us a pretty good idea of what market value is. As you can imagine, with commercial properties, and particularly in our state, those sorts of transactions don't happen every day. And for the properties that we're dealing with here, they weren't, they, there haven't been any sales in, in kind of recent, relevantly recent memory to rely upon. So what do you do in that situation? While the State Supreme Court, again, recognizes that the three generally-accepted real estate appraisal practices are all valid ways to estimate, estimate what that market value might be. Those three approaches, very briefly, comparative sales, the cost approach, and the income capitalization approach. Comparable sales is as it sounds. Do we have recent sales of similar properties that we can use to get a sense of what the value of this property, the property in question, might be? Cost approach, what's it gonna cost to build a substantially similar property, to reconstruct it as of, as of that date? And income capitalization, we'll talk a lot about that here shortly. But really, it's, what's, what's the income stream that a property represents? What can we, can we, can we sort of quantify what that, what that return on investment might be? Now, those three approaches are all valid. No one is necessarily inherently better or more accurate. They have different, I think, different roles depending on the context. Some might have different utilities, some might have different relevance. And so, you know, just again, briefly, I think in terms of, in terms of utility, when we think about the comparative sales approach, particularly here in North Dakota, these, you know, these sorts of commercial properties aren't selling every day. And so it's not uncommon to not have a useful, quality enough dataset to be able to, to run a, a reliable sales comparison approach. And actually, that's something that, that the taxpayer here and, and the City, City Assessing Department agree. There just really isn't enough there to run a reliable approach. In terms of relevance, you know, for, for a residential property, I guess unless you're, you know, you're thinking about, you know, renting it out as an Airbnb, the income approach doesn't really, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, right? On the flip side, I think for a commercial, for a commercial property, the cost approach might actually serve more as a check rather than sort of a primary, primary analysis of value. But really, all of that is meant to say that there's certainly some science in this, but there is also some art as well. And I think, you know, to the extent that any, any of you have any sort of experience with real estate investing or have seen appraisals, you know that it's not uncommon for those three approaches to present slightly different or drastically different values for a given, for given property. Sometimes those values are very tightly bunched, sometimes they're a little bit broader. And an appraiser will oftentimes weight those three different approaches based on a little bit of their gut, but also a recognition of, all right, the data that we've got, what's, what's good? Do we have good sales? Maybe I'm gonna weight that at 60% and weight the other two at 20% each, that sort of thing. That's the sort of, sort of analysis, analysis that goes into sort of that multi, multi-approach view of real estate assessment, trying to get to, trying to get to market value. I say all of that because I think you can do that here today. Frankly, I think that's what you did last year as well. And I, you know, I, I think what I want to do next is really just sort of give you a sense of what are those data points that you can, that you can weigh. Like I said, we have three different approaches, approaches to value. You essentially have two of them in the information that's, that's presented to you between the taxpayers and, and the City Assessing Department. The sales comparison approach, like I said, you really don't have any sort of analysis done on that because there just isn't, there just isn't, you know, recent nearby quality sales data to support any sort of, any sort of decent, decent analysis on that front. And so the city hasn't prepared that, taxpayer hasn't prepared that either. The other two approaches, the cost approach and the income approach, you do have. The City Assessing Department and the information that they've provided does essentially have a cost-like approach in there as well. You know, based on what's it, what's it gonna cost to build, you know, properties of, you know, these particular specifications. I'm not gonna contest that. I don't, you know, I'm not an architect, I'm not, not a construction manager. I don't have access to the, you know, sort of mass appraisal tools that the assessing department has. I think it's, you know, of, I don't think it's of primary importance with regard to, to a commercial property, but it's a useful, useful data point. So you have that. That's one, kind of one data point that you have before you. The income approach, the, the city has prepared an income approach, and I'm, I'm glad they did that. I can tell you frankly that not every city assessing department does that sort of thing. And I'm really not going to contest much, you know, for, for the result that the, that the city income approach does. What I will say, however, is that it largely represents an analysis based on more citywide survey information. So that's where that sort of data comes from. You know, I'm sure it's, it's quality data. I know it's, I know it's not complete, partially frankly because I know that my taxpayers, my clients haven't provided information as part of that survey. I know they're not alone in that sort of thing. You know, and, and also frankly, I guess, you know, my, my clients can't necessarily know the quality of the data that gets provided by other taxpayers to, to the city there. But that's generally the sort of information driving that income approach. It has its biases, you know, just as, just as a cost approach does, just as any, any, you know, any of the three approaches, approaches does. So that's point two that you have, sort of, you know, as a, as a data point for, for consideration. Point three is the income approach that the taxpayer has prepared. And what I will tell you is you have in your materials, the, actually, the actual, you know, income approach calculation that's been prepared for each year, for each of these properties, and I'm certainly, certainly happy to go through and, and describe any of the, any of the numbers, any questions you might have on those. But what I will say is, to the extent possible, what we use in those calculations is property-specific numbers, real world coming straight from the financial statements, from the rent rolls, to the extent that we can. There are two, there are two numbers that are not coming straight from those pieces of information. Number one is the assumed number that we use for reserves per, per unit in the property. We use a standard $250 just as a, just as a kind of standard, standard practice number. That's something that we've seen in other income approach calculations. You know, to the extent that you think that's, that's maybe not the, not the best number to use. I actually have it on my spreadsheet here. I can plug, I can plug that in. I'm certainly open to, open to doing that. The other number that isn't coming straight from financial statements is the capitalization rate. And of course, we can, we can get into that. I think you folks, we've, we've had this sort of conversation before. There's a bit of an art form when it comes to deciding what's, what's an appropriate capitalization rate. We have a few different data points, you know, from market-based information, and then actually from historical sales of these two properties that, that support that 9.75% number. I realize that that, you know, folks, folks will disagree, and I think the, the City Assessing Department has a different, different number that they would use on that sort of thing. But, but that too, I think, to the extent that you have information or, or strong feelings, we can, we can plug that in there and, and adjust the calculation accordingly. That's the best information that, that we have, that we have there. So those are those three, those three approaches there. Like I said, I think the property-specific analysis that the taxpayer's income approach calculation is more relevant than, than the other one, the other two data points that you have before you, the cost approach and the, the income approach sort of results that the, that the city has prepared. I think, you know, you know, and, and I know that if, if we were in the market for these properties and we were trying to get a sense of what, what is the fair market value? What's the number that, you know, I think that, that I should be able to buy these properties for? I'm, I'm gonna run an income-based approach analysis using the actual performance of the property. That's gonna be the best idea, that's gonna give us the best idea of, you know, what's the, you know, how is this, how is this property going to perform based on how it performed in the past? But at the same time, I certainly, certainly realize that we might also run an income-based approach, you know, using, using the, using the methodology that the City Assessing Department uses. Both of those approaches have biases. I think they get washed out in the end. But, but really, at the end of the day, kind of the, the responsibility here is to put on that hat of the investor and get a sense of, all right, what is, what is that value that I think, what is that fair market value that I, that I think that is? Like I said, this isn't an equalization hearing. It's a determination of what's, what's the fair market value of this property? And I think that based on all of this information, an appraiser is gonna try to reconcile those three different, those three different results. I think ignoring any one of them isn't, isn't an option. You have three different data points, three different, you know, sources of evidence, evidence before you. I think you need to find a way to make all of those sort of, sort of jive together. So with that, with that said, I don't know if I can pull this up on the screen. If I, if I can't, this is also in your information, in the packets of information as well. For Jefferson, it's starting on page 15 of, of that PDF that was circulated. And then for Lincoln, actually, Lincoln, it's on page 15 is that, of that as well. And what, what that represents is, it's essentially just a, just on kind of the top half, top half of the page. It's just sort of a, a summarization of the taxpayer's income approach. What is, what's the value that's presented through that calculation? And then for the assessing department, what's the value presented for the cost approach? And then the income approach as well on, on those. And, and what I've, what I've tried to do with that, and, and I actually, I do have it on, on spreadsheet form here too, just, you know, to kind of see how, how this sort of thing works. Those are a few different examples as to how you might go about reconciling, reconciling those three, those three data points. I've got a couple particular examples. You know, maybe you equally weight the, the income approach that the taxpayer prepared with the cost approach that the, that the assessing department prepared. You'd be ignoring the, you know, the City Assessing Department, and like I said, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's a proper result. But that is one, one possibility there. The, you might also average, average the two income approaches, and then equally weight that with, with the cost approach. And that's, that's what that presents. And then it doesn't come across in the, you know, in the, in the print-off here, but, but sort of in that particular weighting section. I've got things sort of equally weighted right now, and that's the result that equal weighting would do. If, if you tell me, hey, you know, I think for 2019, we should wait, you know, we should wait this, we should wait the taxpayer's income approach 40%, right? And we should, you know, wait the other two similarly. We can plug that in, and I, I've actually, I've got it on the spreadsheet here and, you know, certainly don't, kind of wanna have it. You know, if, if I can, I'd certainly put it up on the, on the computer, on the, on the projectors here, just so you can see I'm not kind of fudging anything there. Oh, great. And really, the reason, the reason for doing this is, you know, it's like, I know, as I, into the wrong side. Just to show you how, how things, how things might change if you, you know, if you do those sorts of, sorts of different, different weightings, right? I mean, you know, obviously, I can, I can tell you, you know, I can just, I can just kind of tell you verbally how it, how it comes through. But we can see, you know, we can see specifically how the numbers, how the numbers might change. I mean, if you feel strongly that, you know, you know, the, the taxpayer's income approach produces a significantly different result, as, as frankly in these, these calculations, they do, maybe you weight it, maybe you weight it less. And we can, and we can do that. I can plug that in specifically here. You know, alternatively, again, if you, if you feel like just averaging those, as I've, as I've seen appraisals do, and maybe you have as well, that's, that's, that's the result there. But really, again, I, I say all of this for two reasons. Simply to request that you engage in the same exercise that was done last year, right? I know we didn't have a, a, you know, fancy spreadsheet, not that this one is fancy or anything, but we didn't have a spreadsheet, you know, kind of showing how it all, how it all works out. But also in the end, you know, I think it's important that, that sort of a, a whole data approach produce a result here. So with that, certainly happy to answer questions, drive the spreadsheet if you'd like, and, and go from there. Yes, sir? Yeah, please. Effectively done. Yep, yep. And the two properties, I'll just, I'll clarify too. The two properties, the calculations are exactly the same. Correct, correct. So we actually heard a couple, we had a couple hearings, actually. At the first hearing, the city didn't have all of the information before them. The city chose to, chose to deny the abatements. And I think the record probably shows that. No, no, there isn't. No, there isn't. Again, this is essentially the same discussion that, you know, that we had last year. And, and, and again, my, my request, I, I don't know that I necessarily framed it as such in prior years. But my request is simply that we do what was done last year as well.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if you want to have Joe do his little thing, but I do have several questions for Mr. Tibbles.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. It's tough for a German guy to pronounce that name. So, part of my question is, and, and maybe it's a frustration with the process here, is, did you have any conversations in February 2019 when you received the 2019 valuation letters from the city?
At that time, you know, at that time, we had been, I'm trying to go back, back in memory here. 2019, I actually wasn't, wasn't associated with, with this law firm. But I can tell you that we've been, you know, it's, it's no secret, we've been working with this taxpayer, these two taxpayers for, for a number of, number of years now. And, and ultimately, you know, in the end, the decision was made, you know, with, with last year, it had been, the decisions had been made sort of on a year-by-year basis, and, and our goal this year was essentially to get, to get caught up, to address the concern that I think you're getting at, right, which is, you know, why is it, why is it that we're not, you know, we're making everybody go back three years, right?
Why didn't we deal with this in 2019? Exactly, okay.
Yep, yep.
So in your presentation, you make an assumption of a cap rate of 9.75%. This, this would be for the year of 2019, okay? So what data do you have to support that? And I'll just, I mean, I'm in the commercial real estate arena. I would love to have had projects to present at 9.75 in 2019. And so what dat- data do you have? I mean, I, I've viewed the, the da- data that Mr. Zander thing, and I've read as much as the portfolio that I did. I'm just trying to figure out, where did you come up with that number?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I'll, I mean, I'll admit, as is often the case, we don't necessarily have a ton of data supporting that. Really what we have is, is what I would call sort of three, three sources of information, right? We have, we have, boy, now I'm drawing a blank as to whether it was Jefferson or Lincoln. But for one of the properties, we do have the published cap rate from, from CoStar or a similar, similar reporting service for the prior sale, which I believe had occurred in 2014. So it's old, it's old. There's no, there's no doubt about that. We do have sort of a general, kind of upper Midwest market sort of overview and trend over time, essentially showing, I think, between a 7.5 and an 8.5. So we have that. I'm trying to think when, in terms of dates, precisely when that, when that ends. But it's a multi-year view. And then we also have, I believe, for Lincoln, you know, I'm not gonna say that because I can't, I can't confirm here. But basically, at the end of the day, right, we have limited information. I certainly recognize that. And 9.75 is, is the number that's, it's essentially between, halfway between what that published cap rate from earlier was and the trend data that we have sort of across a, you know, across the broader market over time. And with that, with that said, I mean, you know, you know, gosh, I mean, if you've got, if you've got information, I'm, I'm certainly all ears. And then I also have on my spreadsheet, I can, I can plug in a different cap rate.
Well, I, I agree that to get that data narrowed down is tough, so you really can't use a specific number. A range is always typically better, but if you did, I, I would, based on locality, because cap rates are all local as well, that it would be closer to five than it was 9.75, and if you plug in five or five and a half, I think you're gonna come up with a number that's fairly close to where the Mr. Hirschfeld was. And a couple other-
I mean, let's, if, I mean, if you don't mind, let me just kind of run that here. So we had, you know, so for Jefferson 2019, our approach is considering a 9.75 unloaded. So that's before, before we, you know, we factor into, to account the, the effective tax rate. And that produces through our income approach calculation. I'll see if I can blow this, blow this up a little bit here. So that's a 9.75. I mean, if we split, if we go down to a, you know, a 5.5, the valuation goes from 2.1 to 3.5. So for that year.
The city has you at 4.24.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Follow-up question, again, I know you're not in the, the trenches managing this property, but the data you're providing shows income-to-expense ratio is a 47.5%. That would be from an industry standard significantly high. So I, I mean, your, your data doesn't show if those are loaded, you know, if you have heavy management skill or management expenses and those kind of things. So if you brought that back to a more industry norm, I think that would help. And I think, and I was just trying to look it up, I didn't get it, but I think 2019 had a pretty good occupancy rate for you.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we ended up going down over time, and I think ultimately ends up in sort of a COVID-type, type situation there.
But 2019-
2019 was, was, I think, you know, for both of these properties, the best of the, best of the three years.
Okay. So the, the last, and I don't wanna burn up in anybody's time here, but I need these answers. So as part of this process, you know, you do an internal evaluation, and you, and you have individuals do that. But at no point have, or have you ever engaged like an MI appraisal to kind of support your, so that you're hea- more heavily invested in this? so that you're hea- more heavily invested in this? Because to me, again, I think I'm a little frustrated that we're not dealing with this in 2019. We're in, we're in arrears. And I think you could be much more influential with your information if you had an MI appraisal.
I, I really appreciate that. I, I do. I, I will tell you, and, and I know this isn't, this isn't your problem because I haven't heard this from, from this board. But I will tell you that we do have situations where we bring in a third-party appraisal, CBRE, you know, reputable, reputable folks, right? It's not just Joe's appraisal service in, you know, Backwater, Alabama. And we get told that those appraisals are hogwash, that they're just made up. I, I'm, I'm telling you honestly, honestly, that's the reception that we get with that sometimes. So it's, it's a, it's certainly a balance, right? I mean, you know, and it's obviously an investment for the property owner to, to prepare that sort of thing. I, you know, I, I wish, I wish I could tell folks, I wish I could tell my clients that, you know, yeah, reliably, that's a good investment, you know, but, but I just, I just, I haven't seen that. In the end, you know, what we do know is that you don't need to be a licensed appraiser to, to speak to the value of your own property, you know, so there's no, there's no requirement, requirement there. And, and that's, and that's what we got. I, I share frustration with that. I, I really do, I really do.
Thank you.
And, and frankly, honestly, if you told me today, you know, go get an appraisal, I'd be on the phone this afternoon. I really would.
Thank you. So is, do you have anything to say on this, Joe, or? Before we, you know, kind of move to an action item here? We're doing these each individually each year, correct? Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything else to really say between the two properties. That's essentially, that's essentially the extent of my remarks there. If you have questions, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, happy to answer.
Excuse me, thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Messer. Before I get into anything here, I guess I want to read a statement in would be the recommendation of the, the Council for the City, the Commission for the City of Dickinson. And they have denied and rejected in whole or in part the applications for abatement and refund of taxes. And it'll, this will read the same for everyone that comes up before you tonight, today. That we believe that the information provided by the Dickinson Assessment Department demonstrates that they placed a value on the proper interests in the subject's real property as defined by North Dakota Statute 570204. Furthermore, we believe that the information provided by the Dickinson Assessment Department demonstrates that they have arrived at a value on the subject property that represents true and full value as defined by North Dakota Statute 57020115. Also by providing information relating to the subject property, including a current onsite inspection, sales of similar properties, cost approach analysis, and limited income analysis, we feel the Dickinson Assessment Department considered all factors that affect the value of the subject property. And the Dickinson Assessment Department has provided information to us relating to the valuation they have placed on properties in the community that are comparable to the subject property. They have also indicated in the information provided that the same method of valuation was applied to all similar properties in the community. And we feel that for those reasons, that the value placed on the subject property by the Dickinson Assessment Department was done so in an equitable manner. We do not feel that sufficient information provided by the applicant indicates that the assessment, the Dickinson Assessment Department valuation is an error, invalid, inequitable, unjust, or arrived at in any arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable manner. So just a statement from the City Commission. And I've got a little bit I can say too, but certainly if you've got questions, direct questions for me, we can start with that and go from there. So, Mr. Messer, did you have a?
You're pointing at me?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for the record, there is a, an applicant has an appeal process following, following this hearing, should they not accept the findings of this board? Is that correct? There's another step along the way, that resource that the applicant would have, is that?
And, and certainly, and, and just to make sure we're all on the page here, and, and for those who are listening in or whatever, there, there's the informal process, which the City of Dickinson did a few weeks ago with the, the Board of Equalization meeting. We'll be doing that here in June before you as well. The State Board of Equalization hearing is in August. And so at any one of those steps, the property owner can come before those boards and seek relief. Finding none, then that starts the formal process, which is the abatement process that was heard at the, the city and which we're doing right now. Following that, if they don't find relief to their satisfaction, then they can a- appeal to the District Court then, and that would be the next step after this.
Yep. I guess, Joe, my only, my only comment would be, I think everyone would agree, including, including Mr. Tybbs, that the valuation process in a market that doesn't have a lot of good, solid sales, comparable sales is, is a difficult one. I guess I looked at the numbers based on the questions that are, that I rose based on cap rates and expense to income ratios. I, I, I think you're very close on these. I think we've shown as a board the ability to look at all the data and come up with a reasonable conclusion. And I don't know if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
And, and because we're at the beginning of this process, we're going to hear several more. One other point I do want to make, as much for the record as anything, that because of some of the, the concerns of the property owners today and past years catching up with the down market, we did go ahead and get the assistance of Vanguard Appraisals Company to kind of do a backup check to where we were going with our values. I mean, we were comfortable with where we were at, but, you know, we just weren't getting ahead of it because the market, every year we'd get to where the market is, it was leaping further, you know, downward even further. And so we did, did hire them to come in and give us a recommendation. We were very comfortable with their recommendation and very happy with how the, that turned out, you know, based on the sales we did have. So we're just reading that into the record and of course, open any further questions in that regard as well, but.
Yeah, I mean, the valuation of this property has gone from seven point two million in 2015 to five point six in 16, four point four in 17, actually four million in 18, which was the agreed to amount, so. Hearing none other, I would move that we accept the City of Dickinson's value, true and fa- full value recommendation for Jefferson Creek for the year of 2019 of four point two eight four million, seven hundred, four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been approved and seconded. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
We've got two for 19, Jefferson and Lincoln, so do you want to do both of them? And then move on to the 2020s and then the 2021s?
Okay.
Or however you guys would like to do it.
Okay, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that the, we accept the valuation from the City of Dickinson on true and full value for the Lincoln apartments for 2019 at seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Sorry.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, on to the 2020s.
Does Mr. Tybbs want to present any data or just the culmination of everything? Okay. So, Madam Chairman, I would move that the Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full recommended, recommendation value on Jefferson Creek for the year 2020 of four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll do, roll call vote of Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we, Stark County, accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value on Lincoln apartments for the year 2020 for seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
You want to move into 2021?
One.
Madam Chairman, I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's recommended true and full value for Jefferson Creek twenty, for the year 2021, four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I have a motion, need a second? I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And for Madam Chairman, I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value on Lincoln, Lincoln apartments for the year 2021 of seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Chris Stafford, are you on the line?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Lovely, thank you. I wasn't coming through before, Mr. Tybbs sent me an email, so, uh, thank you, David.
Okay, you can go ahead and present what you would like to say to the board and then we'll see what Joe's comments are.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I won't repeat what Mr. Tybbs laid out in terms of the basics of it. You know that we're here to figure out the true and full value of the subject property, the market value, but it would actually exchange for in a sale. You understand the income, cost, and sales comparison approaches. The property that I'm representing today is a hotel. And we've submitted an income approach analysis in support of our application for abatement. That income approach analysis considers five years of the hotel's own finances and averages out, we average them out over time. We look at five years, the last three years, the prior three years, to try to figure out what a good number would be for the abatement, especially to try to level out any changes that might have varied from year to year and kind of account for any bumps in income. And we landed on, our request to the board is a reduction in the assessment from where it is at about three point five million, which is about, works out to about forty-two thousand, five hundred per room. And we're asking for a reduction to one million, eight hundred and ten thousand, which works out to about twenty-eight thousand, three hundred per room. Now, we all, we did an income approach because that's the data we had. And we only relied on our own income, the income for the hotel itself, because that's the data we had. And we did our best with trying to figure out what the, you know, looking at a broader period of time in order to give it as much accuracy as we could with the, with the data that we had. But we'll acknowledge, I mean, it's, it's just simply true that the City Assessors Office has more data than we do. And, and that data was shared with Vanguard Appraisal, which did in 2019 a revaluation of all the properties in the City of Dickinson and put together the CANA system that kicked out this number for our hotel at three point five million. Now, I think Vanguard did a pretty good job. I do. But it's still a model, it's a master appraisal model, and every model, for how good, it's been perfect. It, it has, it's around the edges. Some are, you know, it, it got, it's probably spot on the average. Like, it's going to have some that are too high and some that are too low. And I think we are in the category of properties that are too high. I'm not criticizing the model and I'm not criticizing what the Assessors Office did. But I am saying that in this case, looking at a single valuation date in time of February 2019, that this property would not have sold for three point five million on that date. Now, in your packet of materials, you should have a thirteen-page letter from Vanguard Appraisal to Mr. Hirschfeld. The letter is undated, but it does reference a September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen contract that's first line. And that letter, on page, starting on page seven, goes through the information that Vanguard considered when it put together its hotel analysis. Like I said, this is the information that the Assessors Office has that we don't. But I think our analysis is pretty consistent with what Vanguard looked at. So on page seven of this letter, we did, so, way of preface, like I said, we only put together an income approach. We didn't have enough sales to look at. And because we don't know what our competitors are doing, they, they don't like sharing their profit and loss statements with us for some reason. We don't have good information on what other hotels are making, but the Assessors Office does. Vanguard considered it. So with respect to the sales comparison approach, Vanguard looked at two sales that occurred in 2018 and a number of four listings of hotels for sale. It would always be preferable, of course, to have a completed transaction, but those listings still give us some useful information. They say what the sellers, what they could get out there in the marketplace. You know, they, they probably, it probably sets the ceiling for what it would sell for because the buyer would come in and, and make a counter offer usually, right? Seller doesn't want to price themselves out of the market. These listings represent the seller's best guess of what they could hope to get. Now, between these two sales and four listings, they range from about eight grand per room, twenty-nine, five, five hundred per room. We're set at about, about forty-two, five hundred per room. So about one and a half times listing, about two and a half times what the average of these sales are. And what we're asking for is an abatement down to about twenty-eight, three hundred per room, which is right on the extreme high end of these sales and listings, the highest of which is twenty-nine, five. Well above the average is six points that Vanguard-